This meeting of the Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is the Father we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine gardens that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We have a few more visitors than the three or four ladies who are usually with us every council meeting. I just want to remind you that we do have business to attend to prior to hearing from the public. While all the folks who are regulars here know that we admonish you to turn off your phones or to put them on vibrate, I just want to remind everybody in the audience now so we don't have to give you a nasty look when something goes off. And I will turn mine off as well. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden? Here. Mr. Clark? Here. Mr. Whittington? Here. Ms. Allen? Here. Mr. Thornbury? Here. Mr. Sankar? Here.
All members are present. We do have two requests to amend the agenda. The first is to add an ordinance that's on your desk, an ordinance authorizing the Treasurer and Tax Commissioner to enter into a tax refund agreement with MedPace Inc. and declaring an emergency. If approved, that would be under introductory readings of ordinances number four. And then the other request is under administration reports from Mr. Berkowitz, his 2014 annual report. Mr. Mumper.
I move to amend the agenda as you just stated.
Seconded by Mr. Sankar. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden? Yes. Mr. Clark? Yes. Mr. Whittington? Yes. Ms. Allen? Yes. Mr. Thornbury? Yes. Mr. Sankar? Yes, sir. Mr. Mumper? Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We do have minutes from the December 23, 2014 meeting. Mr. Thornbury?
Yes, Madam President, I move that the minutes be accepted as a parade.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden? Yes. Mr. Clark? Yes. Mr. Whittington? Yes. Ms. Allen? Yes. Mr. Thornbury? Yes. Mr. Sankar? Yes, sir. Mr. Mumper? Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no reports of standing committees, so we'll move on to introductory readings of ordinances. The first is an ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2015 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, I would recommend that we have all three readings by caption only.
Seconded by Mr. Thornbury. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, there's a few items on these appropriations that didn't have a meeting for what it is. These were, when we set back in November of last year, I'll ask Mr. Stith to elaborate, but when we set the appropriations for last year, we actually were doing that back in November. So these numbers reflected a higher number that we anticipated by the end of the year. But during the month of December, some expenses came in, of which a couple of these items were expended, and therefore our true appropriations for 2015 need to reflect those changes. They're all decreases in special funds. It's not moving any money into any particular individual keys, but just a thumbnail sketch. But I would like to go through the chair, if I couldn't, Madam President, to the auditor for more detailed explanation, if you could, please.
Mr. Stith, can you help us out?
Yes, Madam President. As you know, at the end of January every year, we prepare our Certificate of Estimated Resources, which is the structure that we use to set any appropriations. That has to be filed with the county and then with the Auditor of State, and it shows the amount of estimated revenue plus any balances in funds that we had available starting December 31 to carry over till January 1. When we made those initial estimates for our appropriations, we were doing that in November. Around mid-November, we prepared the estimated, or actually the proposed appropriations for this year. Well, between November 15, when that was repaired, and December 31, there were several funds that had significant expenditures, so their actual balance that they're going to carry over into this year is lower. Now, that means the certificate number is lower than what the appropriations are, which we can't have. So we can do one of two things: raise the certificate numbers for one month, go back, change those numbers back after we adjust everything, or just make these adjustments to the funds that had additional expenditures at the end of the year. So what this does is it cleans up our balances, brings the appropriations for these funds down to what their cash balance was at the beginning of the year, plus the projected revenue, and then we can file our Certificate of Estimated Resources, and we know that none of our appropriations exceed the amount of money that we project we're going to bring in this year. This is basically a little cleanup bookkeeping to make everything balanced, and again, the reason is because our initial figures were from November and more money was spent before the end of December.
Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to suspend the rolls. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden? Yes. Mr. Clark? Yes. Mr. Whittington? Yes. Ms. Allen? Yes. Mr. Thornbury? Yes. Mr. Sankar? Yes, sir. Mr. Mumper? Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2015 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2015 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2015 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mumper.
I move the ordinance to pass.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden? Yes. Mr. Clark? Yes. Mr. Whittington? Yes. Ms. Allen? Yes. Mr. Thornbury? Yes. Mr. Sankar? Yes, sir. Mr. Mumper? Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Move on to ordinance number two, an ordinance declaring property located at 3901 Montgomery Road to be surplus, authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a lease agreement with the Norwood Firefighters Association, Inc., and declaring an emergency. It's a pleasure. Mr. Sankar.
Recommend we have the first reading.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden? Yes. Mr. Clark? Yes. Mr. Whittington? Yes. Ms. Allen? Yes. Mr. Thornbury? Yes. Mr. Sankar? Yes, sir. Mr. Mumper? Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the first reading.
Ordinance declaring property located at 3901 Montgomery Road to be surplus, authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a lease agreement with the Norwood Firefighters Association, Incorporated, and declaring an emergency.
We'll move on to ordinance number three, an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a fire EMS mutual aid agreement and declaring an emergency. And in case the fire chief is here, if you all have any questions, but is there a motion? Mr. Thornbury?
Yes, Madam President, I move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Mumper. Is there any discussion? Mr. Thornbury?
Yes, I'd say if the chief is here, if he'd like to come up and speak.
Chief Goodman, are you still here? Yes, there you are. If you could come forward to the mic.
This is basically housekeeping. The original mutual aid agreement was passed in the early 90s. Since then, the state has homeland security issues and interstate mutual aid agreements. The state has added some protection force. So basically, we had to redo the county mutual aid agreement to incorporate the changes made by the state. And this allows us to go into other communities, allows other communities to come into Norwood without fear of facing any type of damages where I'm immune to it, and Norwood agrees to reciprocate the agreement.
Any questions of the chief? Thank you, sir. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to suspend the rolls. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden? Yes. Mr. Clark? Yes. Mr. Whittington? Yes. Ms. Allen? Yes. Mr. Thornbury? Yes. Mr. Sankar? Yes, sir. Mr. Mumper? Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a fire EMS mutual aid agreement and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a fire EMS mutual aid agreement and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a fire EMS mutual aid agreement and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mumper?
I move the ordinance to be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Whittington. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden? Yes. Mr. Clark? Yes. Mr. Whittington? Yes. Ms. Allen? Yes. Mr. Thornbury? Yes. Mr. Sankar? Yes, sir. Mr. Mumper? Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Move on to our final ordinance, which was added, an ordinance authorizing the Treasurer and Tax Commissioner to enter into a tax refund agreement with MedPace, Inc., and declaring an emergency. Mr. Thornbury?
Yes, Madam President, I would ask, before we make a motion on this, can we ask the The Treasurers here, but if there's anybody up there who can give us a little background inside whether this is something that needs to be...
Mr. Stith or Mr. Berkowitz, can you assist us with this? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. This ordinance deals with an issue created by an overpayment of income tax by MedPace over a period of time, the last couple of years, and essentially, their overpayment now results in a refund that is owed to them by the city. The sooner that this passes, there's a payment plan that's been set up, and the sooner that it passes, the sooner the city can begin quarterly payments and resolve that debt, get it off our books, which obviously has implications beyond this one company.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes, Madam President, I move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Sankar. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden? Yes. Mr. Clark? Yes. Mr. Whittington? Yes. Ms. Allen? Yes. Mr. Thornbury? Yes. Mr. Sankar? Yes, sir. Mr. Mumper? Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance authorizing the Treasurer and Tax Commissioner to enter into a tax refund agreement with MedPace, Incorporated, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Treasurer and Tax Commissioner to enter into a tax refund agreement with MedPace, Incorporated, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Treasurer and Tax Commissioner to enter into a tax refund agreement with MedPace, Incorporated, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clark?
I move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Thornbury. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden? Yes. Mr. Clark? Yes. Mr. Whittington? Yes. Ms. Allen? Yes. Mr. Thornbury? Yes. Mr. Sankar? Yes, sir. Mr. Mumper? Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to administration reports. The first is Mr. Stith regarding the 2014 Auditor's Report and financial issues concerning the city.
Thank you, Madam President. As you know, every January, we close out the previous year, and I prepare a report. We've made a report pretty easy to read, giving graphic representations, using a variety of charts, which we're about to go through, so that the layperson can really understand where the city's money goes. Anybody at home right now watching this, or anybody in the audience that has the capability to get online, if you go to norwoodauditor.com, on the front page, scroll down, all the information we have, and we're about to go over is on there. We have updated the website last week, and we've also added a new area with a large red button on that first page that is questions for the auditor. And there are some interesting questions there. If you're a member of the city, from a financial standpoint, you want to know what your water bill is comprised of, or how much of the money you pay in property taxes comes to the city, and how much goes to the school or to the other county departments. Those are all on there, as well as a breakdown of the expenditures and the revenues for the city. It's an interesting site, at least to me. I try to make it interesting to everybody else. We're going to kind of work our way through the report here as quickly as we can. Reading from the letter at the introduction of the report, it says, "Dear members of Norwood City Council, this is a preliminary auditor's report for the year ending 12/31/2014. It offers graphic representations of the financial activity in 2014. The report includes breakdowns of revenue sources, expenditures by departments, year-to-year comparisons, and a breakdown of health care and overtime costs. In 2014, the city's general fund cash expenditures of $19,454,373,000 kept pace with its revenues of $19,564,997, with revenues marginally exceeding expenses by $101,623 on a cash basis. This initial cash amount carried forward to 2014 is $181,807 before year-end encumbrances." Comparisons of the yearly revenue and expenses are included in this report. An increase in revenue is expected in 2016, and it's based on the continuing economic development in the city that the city is experiencing. In 2014, the greatest revenue source for the general fund, earnings tax receipts, increased while we continued to experience decrease in our intergovernmental revenue. From 2008 to 2014, the decrease in intergovernmental revenue was negative $187,122 in tangible personal property tax, $479,318 in the negative in loss from House Bill 66 reimbursement for the tangible personal property tax reduction, $232,649 in inheritance tax, and $419,044 in local government fund loss. An increase in revenue... I'm sorry. There we go. 2013 is the final year that the city will receive any regular revenue from inheritance tax. In 2013, the city did implement a local hotel tax, which generated $180,227 in revenue in 2014. The city began receiving funds from a federal safer grant to compensate for hiring six new firefighters, which generated $434,760 in 2014 and a projected $528,000 in 2015. The overall, the city's greatest expense was personnel-related expenditures at $16,583,170, which is 81 percent of the general fund revenue, with the largest departments being police and fire. The greatest revenue source being local earnings and admissions tax of $14,521,801, which is an increase of $973,114 over 2013's revenue. Increases in the expenses over 2013 were mainly due to expenses incurred in 2013 and paid in 2014, such as pension payments, longevity, training pay, as well as payments to the C-9 Trust and retirees' health care, and final quarter 2013 vendor charges. Overtime composed 3.5 percent of all general fund personnel expenses totaling $571,419 for the general fund, which is an increase of $41,458 over 2014. The city's largest two departments, police and fire, were the largest recipients of overtime. A detailed overtime analysis by department is included in this report. The 2014 total health care cost for the general fund was $3,104,549. The city spent or encumbered $2,105,243 on health care and dental optical benefits for its current employees, and $450,074 on retirees' health care, with an additional $549,232 for C-9 Trust fund. This represents a total of 18 percent of all total expenses from the general fund. The city ended 2014 with the total encumbrances of $1,098,557, carrying significant financial obligations forward into 2015. This allowed the city to end with a positive cash balance, but decreased the available resources for 2015. Outstanding encumbrances from 2014 are made up of money owed to a police and fire pension fund, $398,806. The C-9 Trust and retirees' health cares, $352,532. Fourth quarter vehicle fuel and Duke Energy, $55,546. State examiner fees for future audits, $28,582. And other contractual, $138,382 in materials and supplies, $57,834 in fixed expenses, $4,183. A chart of outstanding encumbrances is included on page 17. The amount owed to the police and fire pension fund is due to a single semi-annual payment and a double payment due at year-end in December, secondary to the pension fund changing its quarterly payments to monthly payments. In a cost-saving measure, the police and fire departments operated a decreased level of minimum manpower staff requirements in 2013 and 2014. These are scheduled to return to their regularly contracted levels in 2015. The city's health department continues to operate at diminished staffing levels. This report also contains reference material, including 2014 statement of cash position, revenue reports from 2005 through 2014, a detailed report with itemized expenses by department. The year-end auditor's report contains the initial totals at year-end closeout for 2014 and are presented in unaudited form. Fully audited detailed information will be available in the 2014 GAAP report, which should be available in the spring of 2015. I hope you find this information useful. Going through just a couple bits of information here, this is the auditor's report. Sorry, everyone in the back, you can see this all online. It's probably more than you wanted to know, but it's exciting to some of us.
Only some of you.
But what I wanted to show everyone is to kind of get a feel for how easy it is to read this, because I know that listening to everything I just went through just numbed your brains quite a bit. But when you can really break it down into what's our revenue versus our expenses, there's a nice bar graph, all the totals across the bottom, how much we carry forward into this year, what the debt is coming forward into this year. Bar graph showing revenue and expenses from 2008 through 2014 each year, comparing the Earnings tax revenue, and as you start to look at graphs like this, and you see, wow, you know, we did really well from 2004 and '05, and we peaked in '09, and it really dropped off there into '12, was really far down, but we're climbing our way back out. That's the story we want to tell. And it's the same thing here for all total general fund revenue. Anybody that wants to know a breakdown of where our money comes from, a nice lovely pie chart here showing the large one there, which is the earnings tax, and then everything else, showing the totals of where our revenue sources come from. This tracks monthly revenue in earnings tax, which is just a quick representation of it. Our intergovernmental revenue, this has always been a big concern for the city. As you know, a few years ago, we had our intergovernmental revenue cut. This was money that the city got from the county, and that was your sales tax collections. And that sales tax was supposed to come back to each community to help support your community and pay for your fire department, your police department, and fix the puddles in your street. But a few years ago, the state government decided, you know what, we're not going to give that back to you. Those local government funds you were receiving, you can't have anymore, and they decided to keep a big chunk of it, and I have a strong opinion of that, obviously. This shows exactly, on this page, the drop that we've seen in that revenue coming from the state. The state that is supposed to give you money back to your local community to pay for things like your streets and to pay for things like your local services. The state has cut, and we've seen a huge reduction in that. General fund expenditures, there's a nice pie chart, you can see. There's a really big thing there, the fire department. There's another really big thing, the police department, and then there's a lot of little things. And this shows the totals for the entire year of 2014, how much was spent on each one of these departments. Mine's the little tiny orange one there, but everybody has a piece. The money that's carried over, when we said, what is the debt from last year, or actually, this is miscellaneous funds here, C-9 Trust, retirees' health care, debt. On that previous pie chart, there was a little wedge called miscellaneous. This just breaks down the miscellaneous, because those pieces would have been so small on that, you wouldn't have been able to really see them well. Expenses, what do we have? Personnel, number one. That's the biggest piece of the pie. We're paying our people to come to work for the city and provide services. How much is spent on materials and supplies, or contractual, or fixed expenses, like gas and electric, vehicle fuel, things like that? That's what this one tells you. Overtime report, you can see every department overtime, tracking it from 2005 to 2014, how much was spent. This is health care cost. We talked about how much of the health care, 18 percent of our general fund budget going to health care costs, and then a breakdown of exactly what those costs are. We're getting to the end, I promise. Police expenses by key, showing personnel, contractual, materials and supplies, and then within personnel, how much is overtime, how much is pension, how much is health care. Same chart for the fire department. This is when we talk about the general fund encumbrances, what do we owe money on at the end of the year. In December 31, when we said, here's the open purchase orders, those bills we haven't gotten from things we incurred in 2013, or 2014 in December and in November, plus things that we're still paying on, like the C-9 Trust. This shows exactly what the balances in each one of those were at the end of the year. From there, it gets into some long pages, tracking every key, every single fund that we have, which we've got about 90 of them, following from 2005 through 2014, the revenue on a yearly basis that comes in. You can see what goes up and what goes down, and where the city gets its money. Once you get through that long thing, you get into the same thing in expenses. If you want to look at the auditor's office, how much did we spend on telephone? It's here, every year, just following across. That's about 27 pages long, but it's good to look at if you want to look up one specific thing. If you want to know how much I spent on paper, it's there. Just look for it. So that auditor's report is available at norwoodauditor.com. You can download the PDF and scroll through it. All of the charts that we just looked at are just on that front page. You can just scroll down and see all of those. All of our financial information going back for years is there. There's tons of data. The new section that I put in that is called Questions for the Auditor, anything that's financial, you send me a question, I'll make one of these charts about it, because I love doing it. Any questions for the auditor?
Thank God, there are people that are bean counters like you. Any other... Does anybody have any questions of the auditor? All right, thank you. We'll move on to Mr. Berkowitz, your 2014 Law Director's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to know, did the city pay for that laptop?
No, I paid for this, because my old one had a Vista sticker on it.
I don't have any pie charts. Thank you, Madam President. Members of council, pursuant to Highway Revised Code Section 733.62, I am pleased to submit the following report on the activities of the Law Director's Office for the year ending December 31, 2014. The Law Department provides legal advice to the municipal officers of the city, boards, and commissions. Much of that advice was provided at the request of elected officials, members of city government, those boards and commissions. In 2014, the Law Department assisted the police and fire departments, the Division of Building and Property Maintenance, and the Health Department to address matters involving nuisance properties and zoning. We prepared and reviewed numerous contracts involving the city, including employment contracts with unions representing city workers. In addition, we helped draft and review contracts with private parties, including contracts for the construction of the Rockwood Exchange and the University Station. The Law Department drafted numerous ordinances and resolutions at the request of the mayor, city officials, or departments in 2014. Forty-nine of those were passed by city council. Among these were an ordinance re-zoning several large portions of the city to help promote economic growth and to maintain a high quality of buildings and uses in those areas. The Law Department prosecutes misdemeanor offenses and traffic violations in Mayor's Court, held twice weekly here in City Hall. A complete record of fines and court costs collected by the clerk of courts is attached as Exhibit A. 2014 collections demonstrated a decrease of about, I believe, $644 from 2013 collections. However, the 2013 figures may reflect a spike in collections, which resulted from the city's agreement with the Butler County Jail. That agreement, as you've all, I believe, heard before, relieves Norwood of the overcrowding That agreement, as you've all, I believe, heard before, relieves Norwood of the overcrowding problems associated at the Hamilton County Justice Center. Put simply, word has gotten out that jail sentences issued in Norwood mayor's courts are no longer routinely delayed or summarily reduced by the Hamilton County Sheriff, but are enforced in full. In response, we have seen that compliance with court orders, including the payment of fines and court costs, has increased dramatically. The figures in 2014 may reflect a leveling off of that, of the impact of that agreement that was demonstrated more dramatically in 2013. We also prosecute criminal and traffic cases in Hamilton County Municipal Court, including objections to magistrate's decisions and cases transferred out of mayor's court. The law department is involved in litigation brought against the city in both state and federal court. We represent the city directly or assist outside counsel in seeking resolutions to these matters. Several lawsuits were settled by the parties and/or were dismissed in 2014. A collaborative effort by Norwood police officers, firefighters, the mayor, safety service director, the building and law departments resulted in the closing of the Quality Hotel and Suite Central in Norwood. An investigation by the Norwood Drug Task Force and agents of the Ohio Bureau of Criminal Investigations uncovered criminal activity, including felony drug trafficking and prostitution at that location. In response, the law department sought and received a restraining order to abate the nuisance created by those activities. On June 2nd, 2014, the Hamilton County Common Police Court ordered the city to close and padlock the hotel. This order is still in effect today, though litigation continues in both state and federal courts. Our hope is that at 2015, we'll see that property turned around and brought back to some positive and productive use. The law department also works with the mayor and safety service director to address and resolve grievances filed against the city. We work with Norwood police, Hamilton County Sheriff's deputies and other officials to identify sex offenders living within 1,000 feet of a school, park, daycare, or playground in violation of state or local law. The law department notifies such offenders and informs them that they must either move or face legal action. The vast majority of them, once notified, voluntarily move without any additional legal action. On a personal note, and in the good news department, the law department family grew a little bit larger in 2014, as both myself and Mr. Brown welcomed new additions to our families. We both would like to thank everyone for all of the kind words and well wishes and complying with the request I made this time last year, that all of you avoid any city legal disasters during that May-June month. It is, it is an honor and a privilege to serve Norwood and its citizens as the city's attorney. I'd like to recognize the outstanding staff of the law department, Sharon Harris and Chris Brown, for all they do for Norwood. They are Norwood residents, and their contributions to our community are too numerous to count. I'd also like to thank Mayor Williams, Mr. Gears, Mr. Stith, Mr. Maloney, city council members, Chief Kramer, Chief Goodman, and all of the other city officials and employees. It has been my pleasure to serve alongside each of you, and I look forward to continuing to work together on behalf of the citizens of our great city in 2015. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Berkowitz? Thank you, Mr. Berkowitz.
Thank you.
We will move on to other requests to address council, so I will, these were stacked on my desk, so I'll take them in this order. Just a reminder that, as I call you forward, each person has five minutes to speak. This is traditionally when council listens, so don't think that they are ignoring you by not responding to your remarks. We will have an opportunity, if council wants to do that, later on under unfinished business. So we'll get started. The first is Brian Taylor. Is Brian Taylor here? If you would like to come up to the microphone?
One of the so-called black race baiters who's here to demand that you retract your slanderous statements and apologize for your characterization of those men and women who choose to activate themselves, to demand an end to this systemic and institutionalized racism that leads to violent police encounters and also the general harassment that happens in a heightened way, but not certainly limited to people of color. The membership of groups like ours around the country is multi-ethnic, wide-ranging in our political ideas and backgrounds. But we all agree that there is a race problem in this country, in every city within it. To deny it, as you do in your statement, is part of the problem, not part of the solution. In doing so, you have offended your own constituency and the broader city that surrounds you. Our actions in this city were not aimed at any particular department or any particular police officer. But your remarks are shining a light on your particulars, and they're not good. And they haven't been since I used to come to the YMCA down the street 25 years ago. How Latinos and young people of color are dealt with in some of these encounters with the law is deplorable. And we have example after example that go beyond a simple reported acts of violent encounters that, on your records. How you view us, as expressed in your statement, reveals a piece of why people have no faith in the powers that be. That's you. To address the concerns of those who peacefully protest and cite widely published facts of inequality and abuse, and we find this completely and utterly unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Next, we have William Brown. I'm sorry, what?
Can I ask, can I ask that the folks identify beyond their name, as we typically do, have people give their address?
Yes, I'm sorry, I failed to mention that. If you, when you come up, if you give your name and address as well?
Yes, there are people who would like to hear these presentations. Could they speak up just a little bit without a microphone? It makes it very difficult.
There is a microphone, it doesn't, it's primarily for television, but yeah, we'll ask them to speak up.
Can we open those doors? Would that help?
I don't think so. William Brown, please come forward, and if you'll give us your name and address. And again, you'll have five minutes.
Hello, I'm William Brown. I live at, goodness, 5083 Mills Avenue, right here in Norwood. I'm a resident of Norwood. Some of my early experiences with Norwood, I can remember coming down to Surrey Square, and I would have to catch the bus, and I always wanted to go to the Dollar Movie. I know a lot of people remember that Dollar Show that we used to have here. Good times going there. But on several occasions, I would have young men throw bottles out the window and call me the N-word. I was glad they always missed, they never hit me, thankfully. But, you know, the rumors circling Norwood my entire life was that, that there were racist people there, and I had never really experienced, except for when I was a teenager, just coming through and trying to get to the movies. But you know, I, when I saw that letter, I, it really did, it opened up wounds and it hurt me. And I didn't realize, I didn't realize that that hurt was even there for me, because I had thought it was all in the past. But that letter, it really did, it woke those things up, and it reminded me how it felt to be treated that way. But all, all in all, you know, I really would, I would like to disarm the mayor if I could. I know that I have hurt people before and didn't even realize it, didn't even realize it. And the first thing that I would want to do was defend myself. But as I've grown and learned, the best thing to do is to go and apologize, let them know that even though I am blind to your pain, you still have pain. And I have pain, and I would love to work with you to identify your pain. And that's what we have to do here in Norwood. We do have to work together to become a better place to live, to become a better community. And that's all I wanted to say.
Next is Darius Clay. Is Darius here? We'll come back to it later, maybe. Robert E. James III. If you'll come forward and give us your name and address.
Hey, first I would like to greet the council and Madam President. I come to today from 2525 Victory Parkway in Wanted Hills. I'm a former member, resident here in, from Norwood for numbers of years. I was, I was definitely distraught when I heard the letter. It was, it was something that really troubled me, because, you know, it goes back to when I was in high school, and I attended Norwood High School. A lot of you guys know me as a star athlete, you know, not only was I a league or sectional or district, as I'm sure you have to be proud for your son to go to a league or sectional or even state for that matter. But I wasn't just a state qualifier, state placer, state champion, I was actually a national All-American. And when I came to Norwood, I really got a culture shock, you know, because I'd gone to nationals multiple times, I made the world team, not once, but twice. But then I came to Norwood, and I felt really hurt by what I was, you know, the hospitality wasn't what I thought it would have been, you know, being an athlete of my caliber, and especially having a father like Pastor Sonny James, you know, so respected, so revered from his colleagues, his peers. I thought, man, this is going to be awesome, new opportunity. He said, man, this son, man, you're a goal, you did great, new opportunities, new faces, new people to work with, and I said, fantastic. Of course, why would I not be open to that? And when I was shut down, it was catastrophic to not just my ego, everybody has pride, but to just my self-esteem, my confidence, my ability in myself, thinking, can I do this? Can I walk into different arenas, such as Norwood High School, being the caliber of athlete I was, and still being denied, still being told, you know what, we don't really want you on the team. Matter of fact, we don't need you. And, I don't know, me personally, I feel like I need you, you need me, and I think together, as a whole, coming together, that's what really makes us strong. Yeah, I believe as a solo wrestler, I was very, very qualified. But what made it awesome was when I came together with Norwood High School and became a joint part of that team, and became doing duel meets or whatever, and guess what? They got a rest count on him? Well, Boomboom's going to get the pin. And it wasn't until then did they finally open up to even the thought of it. It became very, very challenging, because everything that I had never experienced before came rushing to me and just hit me with a strong culture shock, such as shower time was not the same. It simply was just different, and I'll leave it at that. Keeping it rated PG, you know. But it was just simply different. Thank God, obviously I'm a professional boxer as well, thank God for my skills in that area, because I had to find myself outside of the ring, putting my skills to use, and that's just not the way it's supposed to go. I know, actually, one thing that really troubled me after I graduated even, was to see, okay, you know what, I can deal with this, I got broad shoulders, I was my father's son after all, you know, the apple doesn't fall from the tree, and I knew I was strong enough to handle it. But one thing that got me, you can mess with me, but when you begin to mess with my family, that's not something you want to do to an All-American athlete. And it got really under my nerves when I found out my little brothers were being treated in the same manner I was. I could deal with it, I'm strong, my father, he can deal with it. But my little brothers, especially the ones who are mentally and physically handicapped, is just unacceptable, it's just unacceptable, to where they can literally be humiliated, they can literally be physically mistreated, verbally abused, drinks being poured on them, and then nothing happened? No, 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 no. That can't be accepted, not anymore. So I'm asking, that unlike that culture shock, let's just how about we blend it in just a little bit? And one thing that I really never got is closure. I think everyone can agree, we've all been hurt sometime in our life, and the one thing you wanted from that person was what? A simple apology. A simple apology saying what? Hey, man, I'm sorry, I did that, yeah, I was right, I was wrong, I should have done that. But because I never got that, it really set in a sense of insecurity, if I can say the word. And when I see it continued in my own family, that's when enough's enough. And I just want to say, thank you again, Madam President, thank you council for having the opportunity, finally get that burden off our chest, finally being able to say, hello, I'm here, that wasn't right. And thank you for, I'm going to thank you in advance for the closure. I'm going to thank you in advance for, I know, I have 100% confidence in you guys, that you guys are going to do the right thing, that you're going to stand up and be the leaders that we chose you guys to be. So I thank you for that in advance, and we thank you for this time. So I appreciate the apology, thank you.
Next is Joshua Stockson. Again, if you'll give us your name and address.
Joshua Stockson, 1710 Cleveland Avenue. Counselor, Mr. Mayor. It's been an interesting few days for me. I feel like I've been thrown into the deep end of the pool, trying to swim, figuring out how to sort out all the feelings, all the emotions that have gone around around me. And something I realized today is that regardless of what happens here tonight, that a sleeping giant's been awoken, a giant that is on God's heart for justice and reconciliation in our city. And regardless of what happens tonight, there's going to be people who are committed to seeing that happen in Norwood, that want to hear the voices of the black community, that want to affirm those voices, that want to honor those voices. And I will be committed to seeing that happen. And I know that's going to be difficult, some people might not understand why it's important, but it really is. I grew up on a farm in the middle of white Illinois, I didn't have any people of color around. This has been a journey for me to learn what it means to understand and appreciate the perspective of someone different than me. I'm still learning, I still make mistakes, I still make judgments, but I want to learn. I want to listen, I want to give voice to those who have been hurt, those who have been treated unfairly. And as I met with the mayor yesterday, what I really just encourage you to be willing to acknowledge is that what you said deeply hurt people. And I know that wasn't your intention, I know you were just, you were trying to support the police, and I honor that intention, I honor the ways you've served this city, the ways you're committed to serving this city. But I think you have an opportunity here to begin this work of healing. And again, it's going to happen one way or the other, but I think you have a chance tonight to start that work. And so I'd invite you to start it and to work with all of us to see it through, and that we could work together towards that healing that I believe God wants for this city, and not just this city, as people of And not just this city, as people have pointed out, it's all across the country. This isn't just Norwood, this is everywhere. And so I'd encourage us to be one of those places that begins the hard work of working together, of, of being able to acknowledge, to admit, to confess the ways that we've been wrong, to listen and to listen well to those who are different from us and to give them a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you for that opportunity to speak. Um, my name's Maria Southman. I live at 1756 Mills in West Norwood and I've been a citizen of Norwood for nine years. Um, I support the Norwood Police. I can't emphasize how grateful I've been for their protection and help on several occasions in the past few years. I also want my minority neighbors to feel comfortable and welcome in my community. I feel like I should not need to choose a side and Norwood may not be polarized. I'm disappointed both in the wording of the mayor's letter and in the media call for boycott of the businesses in Norwood. I just feel like that creates an unnecessary division between us. I'm disappointed in the negative press that's been given to our city in light of these events and in some of the more inflammatory responses to the letter I've seen in social media, both in support and dissent. I don't understand why there can't be a middle ground and invites face-to-face conversation and understanding. Online forums do not tend to lend themselves to civility, but it's hard to be mean to someone you're looking in the face and getting to know. We can all do better at listening and seeing the humanity in one another. Um, I invite the mayor to apologize for his choice of words and to imagine with us what it might look like, for Norwood to acknowledge past injustices toward minorities and to take proactive steps toward including minority opinions on the police force and in local government so we can work together to create a Norwood we can be proud of. Thank you.
Did I pronounce that correctly?
Almost.
Oh, I'm sorry. What is the correct way?
Rashida Manuel.
Manuel, Rashida Manuel. Let me say it correctly.
Okay. Um, I am not a Norwood resident. My name is Rashida Manuel. I live at, uh, 918 Morris Street, um, in Walnut Hills. Um, I'm not a resident, but I am someone who, um, spends money in Norwood, who drives through Norwood, who has family who lives in Norwood and spends quite a bit of time in Norwood. So, um, I just want to say that, um, not only is my name Rashida Manuel, but apparently according to you, I'm a race-baiting black leader. Um, I'm here tonight, um, though not to so-called race bait, but to speak truth to power and to call out the mayor for his blatantly racist comments. I am in mourning. Seemingly every day, I'm bombarded with stories and images of the vicious violence brought upon women, children, and men of color, black people, in this country, in this state, in this city. Black people are dying at the hands of police across the country. In this climate that the mayor of Norwood would make these kinds of comments is the epitome of race-baiting and complicit in the system of racism and white supremacy that keeps black people in this country in a state of perpetual oppression, victimized by physical, legal, emotional, psychological, and spiritual violence. It is not only irresponsible to say such things, but it is a slap in the face of the black people who live, work, visit, and pass through Norwood on a daily basis. Mayor Williams, our lives matter. Our rights matter, our voices matter. And if you cannot commit to representing all of us, all of the very diverse people of Norwood, including the black residents, then perhaps you're not fit to serve as mayor. Norwood is not a white-only town and your blatant racism has no place in it. Your comments are especially inflammatory in light of the reputation of Norwood as a place where not only black people are unwelcome, but that it's actually dangerous for us to be here. I grew up in Pleasant Ridge, literally blocks from Norwood, and the stories that I heard about this city are firmly implanted in my memory. That you, Mayor Williams, would feel comfortable saying such inflammatory, hurtful comments in light of this history, in light of this reputation, and in light of the current climate makes the weight of your words even heavier. What you said was racist and I cannot help but believe that you were fully aware of that. So again, if you feel that it is appropriate for you to blatantly attack your city's black residents, then an apology is the very least that you can do. If it is too much for you to represent all of your constituents, then perhaps you should step aside and let someone more qualified do the job. And if by saying this, I'm race-baiting, then so be it. Thank you.
I'm gonna pass.
Please?
I'm gonna pass.
You don't want to address?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mary Ellen Mitchell Eilerman?
Mayor Williams, council. My name is Mary Ellen Mitchell Eilerman. I live at 1756 Cortland Avenue, soon to be 4220 Carter Avenue. Very invested in the city of Norwood. First, I want to say that I am here first as part of a larger collaborative and that the words that Angela Pensella will be sharing soon represent the larger statement that I want to say. But I also wanted to come and represent my individual family and the time that we've spent in Norwood. I stand before you as a seven-year resident of Norwood, a Norwood homeowner, a Norwood business owner, the director of a nonprofit organization that is based here in Norwood, and the mother of a child that attends Norwood schools. Like the experience of my black neighbors, when I came to Norwood, I felt as if the red carpet was rolled out for me. Through conversations with people, many of the people that are here today, I was told that my family was exactly the kind of family that they wanted in Norwood, that we were the future of Norwood. We've made significant investments, not only in property, but also in people. We've met with many of you about causes that we feel strongly about. We've worked with you on the Preventing Injuries Program and we've collaborated with you on the renovation of Upper Millcrust Park. We've come to know city officials as we've tried to be team players. And we want to make this place, a place where we can raise our family, our five-year-old and our two-year-old. And as we've done this, we've attempted to follow your rules. Whether those be complying with the building code, pulling permits on renovations, or coming to understand that all infrastructure decisions go through the city manager. We've met and met and met with many of you people, many of you representatives, many of the people that work in this building to try and do things the right way. When we sought to open Lydia's House, a home for women and children in crisis, we consulted closely with many city officials and labored arduously to open that home in a way that complied with all Norwood regulations. My husband is an architect and he said, we're doing this the right way. We submitted revisions to building permits. Mayor Williams, I have tried to follow your rules. I've tried to be the kind of person that you've said will be the future of Norwood. But last week, when your letter went public, you broke all of my rules. You see, the rules that I follow say that you stand with the marginalized, not kick them while they're down. The rules that I subscribe to don't undermine black leaders by calling them race-baiting and the rules that I follow say that when you do insult someone, indeed open an unhealed wound, you apologize. So the kind of rules we're teaching at my house. I'm here today, Mayor Williams, to let you know that since last week, despite all that I have invested in this city, I have been ashamed to say that I live here. I want you to know that your words and your failure to recant them have not only hurt masses of people outside of this city, but they've hurt the people inside of this city. And more than that, they've caused people to rethink moving here and to question me for why I live here. And generally, people outside the city right now pity citizens of Norwood. I'd ask you, Mayor Williams, council, and fellow citizens, to let today be the start of a change. A time to rewrite the new, the rules of Norwood, to make it a place where all are welcome. I'd ask you to take very seriously this moment. I'd ask you to attend the community forum at Xavier University's Ballerman Chapel, where I go to church, on February 16th at 6:30 PM. And I implore you to understand that Norwood, as it existed a week ago, the Norwood that thought that letter was acceptable must change. It must change if you want families like mine to stay here and especially if you want new young families to come here.
Okay, I'm sorry. Man, I've, I've been where you at, the hot seat. Yeah, well, first of all, I'm State Senator Cecil Thomas. And, uh, Norwood is part of the ninth district, so I am Norwood's representative at the state. And, uh, before I say anything, can everybody in here stand up who support the Norwood Police? Will you please stand up? Thank you. I, I did that simply because, uh, I, I know that the mayor's heart was in the right place, attempting to just let his officers know that they support, that he support them. And I know how critically important that is because I was a law enforcement officer for 27 years. And to have the community's support is so vitally important. And this is why, um, Mr. Mayor, your citizens support the law enforcement officers, uh, just by their presence here, standing this, this evening. I've heard some, some words such as pain. I've heard words like reconciliation and my words are a time for healing. Oftentimes, we do say things and we say them in a way that it has unintended consequences. But I know that, Mayor, you did not truly mean in your heart what you've heard from some of the citizens here this evening. You were doing what most officials do, which is to try to show support for their law enforcement officers, given the situations we've seen around the nation. And that's important. I want to say to citizens of Norwood and to the citizens around the state, uh, in fact, this was even a national headline, Mr. Mayor. Norwood is a city on the move. And I commend all of you legislators who have managed to hold it all together during those, these most difficult times. You lost your government fund and, uh, your local government fund and your taxes. And I remember when, uh, the, uh, the plant, the auto plant left Norwood. But you all persevered, persevered and you held it all together. Well, here's another time to persevere and hold it all together. I personally believe we just need to pray on this issue and pray for Norwood and pray for your leaders because this is a time, oftentimes, things happen for a reason. And maybe there is some things that need to be addressed, uh, with the city administration and some of the citizens here in the community. And, uh, this is an opportune time to do that. And I'm just offering any help that I can be to facilitate some discussions that we make sure that we don't tear out, tear that fiber of what Norwood has done in the past. We all have problems in all of our cities. But when we're able to overcome those problems by opening our minds and our hearts to be able to listen. And I remember getting beat up on city council when some things were said and I just had to have a tough skin. So Mayor, I, I just want you to know and I want the people to know, this is an opportunity. I've heard some wonderful statements from everybody that has spoken so far. And, and, and we just have to understand that as legislators, we are not perfect and we make mistakes and it takes the public to sometimes whip us back into shape and, and keep us moving forward. But I applaud the city of Norwood for all that you're doing. You guys are really making some great strides and, uh, I'm looking forward to doing all that I can. And we'll work on that, work, that local revenue. We've, we've already discussed it. Thank you, Mayor, and members of, of the council. Thank you.
Pastor Sonny James? Your name and address, if you will. Thank you.
I am Pastor Sonny James, Senior Pastor of Keep It Real Worldwide Ministries, based here in Norwood, Ohio. I am one of four African-American clergy in Norwood, Ohio. However, I stand before you as the only African-American clergy that actually resides here in Norwood, Ohio. I live at 1830 Hopkins Avenue. The first thing that I need to say to all of us that are here today, shame, 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 myself included. Folks, we are in the 21st century. We have a community that is setting a precedence. When we send out literature or documentation, you have to understand that that documentation pierces the ears or the eyes of children that are forming their mere identity of who they are. I've hurt people, I've said things that I shouldn't have said. Everyone in here probably has. But see, here's the problem. As I stand before you now, there is no black man or woman that can say firsthand, they have seen the viciousness of discrimination in this community as I personally have. I've been here 12 years. I've adopted two boys that have disabilities. I know the struggles that all of us have in our households. But prior to that, I sat on a chair of a local organization and I was called into Norwood by a Caucasian family because two African-American boys were not allowed to play on the basketball team without getting beat up. I drove here every morning, took them to school. I came back and I picked them up from school. Some of the officers that are in the room right now can say Pastor James is not lying. They asked, Pastor, let me go to one football game. And I said, great, let's get in my car and we went. There were officers literally feelway as these students hurled the N-word at these children that just wanted to go to a football game. They said, well, Pastor, can I just walk a few blocks home? I just want to feel free. I said, sure. I let them out on Montgomery Road. I drove back down Sherman Avenue. As I got halfway down, something said, no, go back, something's wrong. I turned my car around, I go back to White I turned my car around, I go back to White Castle, and I see a parking lot full of Caucasian students dispersing with mace. The officers show up. The officer begins to talk to the Caucasian students who've just beat up the blacks. And I said, "No, you defend the defenseless. Do you think that officer didn't know his job?" Three days later, I asked for the tapes at White Castle and 911. They're in Jeff Roll's trunk. They're in Jeff's back trunk. Four days later, all of a sudden, the tapes became invisible, disappeared. The officer that was there is in this room today. So, I'm not lying. You see, when we take things, my son with disability was jumped at our school, kicked, thrown down and stomped and poured liquid on him. I stood back while I thought the administration would work with me as a peer, as an equal. To this day, I got nothing. You see, when we stand up for nothing, we will fall for anything. And I stood up, and I did an anti-bullying campaign at Sharpsburg School. And at the end of it, I said, "Who are you?" And all the kids stood up and said, "I'm not a bully." And I said, "Who are you?" And they said, "I'm not a bully." They were crying. But here's the thing, what is a bully? A bully is an arrogant vessel. A bully is a person that says, "I'll slap you in your mouth, and I don't care what you say about it." You see, we have to eradicate bullies. Even if I'm the bully, you have a right to come to me and say, "Pastor James, you just hurt somebody." How would you like it right now in Norwood? If, as you're at home, you're here now, your children are at home, and black kids, not saying they would, just kicking your door, and your kids come out in the middle of the street, and they just walk up to them and just, and just walk off and say, "How you like that?" And then you bring them to the table and say, "Just say you're sorry," and they say, "I ain't..." Not "no," "I ain't." It's a new day in Norwood. On the positive side...
Pastor, can you wrap up?
Yes.
Thank you.
Those of us here in Norwood are coming together. We're asking the citizens and leadership to come on the 16th at Bellarmine Chapel for our first community forum, where we will outlay our plan for Norwood, because we are a great town in spite of our flaws. We will be asking for the police to work with our citizens so that we can bring African-Americans onto a force that's never had one African-American in its history. We will be working with council. We ask the mayor, we ask other leaders and community residents, please come and come to the table. Because if we don't change, then nothing's going to change.
Thank you, Pastor James.
God bless Norwood. God bless America. Thank you.
Again, if you'll give us your name and address, sir, with five minutes. I'm Bishop Bobby Hilton, 693 Fresno Road. I am pastor of Word of Deliverance Ministries, a large congregation in Hamilton County. I'm also president of the Greater Cincinnati Chapter of the National Action Network. When I heard the remarks, and, excuse me, and certainly I honor and respect all of you and the president, Mayor Williams, when I heard the remarks of Mayor Williams, it just reeked, it was like a spear in my heart. I grew up not too far from here. I'll be 57 years old this year.
You're a baby.
But I grew up not too far from here. Now, I'm on Montgomery Road. I grew up in Kennedy Heights, Silverton area, so I knew about the history of Norwood. And when I heard the remarks about race-baiting black leaders, it pierced me. It pierced me to my heart. And immediately, I had a fear for young African-Americans. And I said, "Wait a minute, as I translate this message, what I'm hearing is not so much a support of police," because I support police. What I'm hearing is a mayor saying, "If you happen to get in a situation and you kill a black person unjustly, I've got your back." That's what I heard. That's how I translated that message. May not have been the intent, but that's how I translated that message. And that's why I said, "For your own safety, stay out of Norwood." And I must say again, I appreciate the police chief giving me a note saying, "Everybody would be treated fairly in Norwood." I came tonight in hopes of clarifying who I am as a black leader. I'm not a race-baiter. I'm not divisive. I am someone that supports police. I have many law enforcement officers in our congregation. And so, my reputation and my relationship with law enforcement is very important to me. And I felt like that was just a stab to say, "Okay, you're the leader of this group, and you are attacking police." But I came here tonight to say, "We have never, ever attacked police." I have great relationship with police officers. In fact, my baby sister's been along a police officer for over 20 years. It would be difficult for me to attack police officers. And I want to say, we're not anti-cop. We do not attack cops. While I believe that individuals of every profession should be held accountable for actions, we absolutely are allies with law enforcement, and we support law enforcement. We encourage peaceful and non-violent gatherings. We should work together and come to the table and discuss how we can get to a place of peace, liberty, and justice for all. We don't, we shouldn't be divisive, and we shouldn't do things that's going to tear us down, because all of us want to live in peace. All of us want to live in harmony. All of us want to see our loved ones leave home, go do their daily things, and come back safely. I think that's what all of us wants. And so, I simply say that the message, while we encourage that we should stand with our safety departments, but to include in there race-baiting black leaders, it was destructive, it was a stab right in the heart. And I ask, I humbly ask, if you would please retract that statement, and we'll stand with you in supporting your law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, and Council, Mayor Williams. I brought with me the letter that a coalition put together, a coalition of local residents, which we gathered signatures for. If you sign that letter, would you please stand as I read it? An open letter from Norwood citizens envisioning a new and inclusive Norwood. "We, the undersigned, are citizens of Norwood who care deeply about our police officers. We are grateful for their service and love how they have taken an active role in serving the community, not just in the line of duty, but in events like the Phila Cruiser Food Drive or Zion Food Pantry, Coffee with a Cop, the Pigs and Pins fundraiser, or their giveaway of chicken dinners over the holidays. We have been protected by them, and the organizations that we support have been supported by them. But we were aggrieved to read Mayor Williams' recent letter to the Norwood Police Department. We did not see in it a reflection of the values we hold for our city, for Norwood to be a place of welcome, a place that respects the dignity of all who visit or come to stay. We are residents who proclaim that an often silent majority exists in Norwood, people who believe in racial justice, seek to include non-white and immigrant neighbors, and who believe that an inclusive Norwood is a stronger, more economically viable city. While the mayor may have meant well in his support of the police, the way in which he framed that support implied quite strongly that any of the national concerns about racial profiling and use of force are unmerited and merely political. In addition, whether intentional or not, he also implied immunity for the police in the case of any questionable actions. Sadly, these implied messages only serve to confirm to many people both inside and outside of Norwood that our old reputations are still very much deserved, and that anyone on the wrong side of the police, justified or not, will not be supported. We invite Mayor Williams to honestly and fearlessly reflect with us on the systemic racism that still haunts our city, just as it has haunted communities across our nation. As saddened as we were by Mayor Williams' words, we are grateful for the opportunity they provide to stand up and say that we decry racism, oppression, and injustice. In order to change the narrative of our city, we must start by naming how people have been hurt by racial issues and conflicts, both past and present. We will not be able to heal from these conflicts until we honestly listen to and reflect on people's experiences of racism in Norwood. Minimizing or denying these realities will not make them go away. In fact, that will only make matters worse, as we have seen in the fallout of the last few days. We remember the riots in Cincinnati in 2001, and that, in response, a collaborative agreement was formed between the Cincinnati Police and the diverse community it serves. This agreement has proven to be a model to cities across the nation. It has helped to achieve greater understanding by the citizens of their police force, while also improving accountability of police officers. It shows the community and the police are committed to solving problems together. None of us are served by polarization, so we urge the police department to meet with community members to create together a Norwood collaborative agreement. We ask our city leaders to see this moment not as unnecessary controversy, but an opportunity to preempt future conflicts or tragedies between citizens and police or government leaders. Mayor Williams, Norwood police officers, and all of our neighbors, we invite you to join with us to shift the conversation from division to collaboration. We ask you to welcome the input and honest critique of Black Lives Matter. We ask that we not dismiss black voices, but welcome their leadership in our process of healing and reconciliation. To start this process, we invite you to join us at a community forum, February 16th at Bellarmine Chapel, 6:30, where we can sit down together to find common ground and celebrate all the ways we already agree. We all love our community, and we wholeheartedly support responsible, professional public servants. Let us use this opportunity to create a Norwood we can all be proud of. Thank you.
And just, before you start, I'm sorry, we do have your petition, and it will be part of the record. Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Grove.
Madam President, Mayor Williams and Council. I'll pick this up. Thank you. Good idea. I live at 4311 Allison Street. I've lived here for about 10 years with my lovely wife and two daughters. And I come here not only as a citizen, but also as an attorney. I am the Deputy Director of the Ohio Justice and Policy Center, based downtown. We're a nonprofit that, we're a nonprofit law office that litigates and advocates around the state for smart-on crime reform, making criminal justice systems more fair, intelligent, and redemptive. I do that all over the state. I've been in Cleveland and Columbus very recently, and when I heard that hot issues of racial bias in policing were going on in my own backyard, I obviously had to be here. This is about my home, my family, my community. This is about everything I value and work for. So, let me tell you about two important things I value, safety and fairness. I come here as a lawyer, a citizen, a father, and a neighbor, and I'm here to lift up some powerful opportunities I think we have to make Norwood safer and more fair. We have the opportunity to make our community policing more fair to first acknowledge that it is not. Just last year, late last year, you probably all saw the Inquirer article that pulled out the arrest rates of all the suburbs around Cincinnati, highest on the list for disparate arrest rates in Norwood, Ohio, with blacks being arrested at 7.2 times the rate of white people in this town. That is not fair. That is blatant unfairness. I don't know why it's happening, but we must figure it out. That is reinforcing the reputation that Norwood is not safe and fair for people who are just like me, except their skin is a little darker than mine. There are my friends and my colleagues, people I talk to on a daily basis, people I work with, who drive through here and tell me story after story of like stories you've heard tonight. So, this data says it, stories say it, and this letter that we came, that came out in last week seems to say the same thing, that not only is there racial disparity in Norwood, but that our public officials don't care. That's not what we want to hear. Mayor Williams, you put the fault on black leaders for calling out this unfairness. You also wrote, lifted up the phrase cowardly elected officials. What you did was not courageous. When black people are arrested at 7.2 times the rate of white people in this town, it may be that there are many people on the police force, I believe that there are most people on the police force and in this room, who are at the front tables, who are completely honest when they say they do not intentionally discriminate against people with darker skin. Mayor Williams, members of the Norwood Police Force, I understand that you may be deeply offended when you hear the term racism or racist thrown your direction. What you need to hear is that even if you are genuinely confident that you have no conscious negative conceptions of black people as black people, you are still part of a system that is inflicting pain and humiliation on people of color in a severely biased way. That is what is meant by systemic racial bias. It does not require you to be conscious in your intention of being racist if 7.2 times the rate of people are getting arrested. Something is wrong. Yeah, I just want to add with a story about what might humility and courage look like in this context. Maybe some of you know, heard of Representative John Lewis. He represents, he's a representative to the US Congress down in Georgia. He's famous for, in the 1960s, being part of the Freedom Riders, and for being beaten nearly to death, not only by white mobs, but then arrested by the police in Montgomery, Alabama. He now represents that district. And when he got off, recently, just in 2013, he was at a event where Police Chief Kevin Murphy of Montgomery, Alabama, stood up and apologized for the conduct and treatment that John Lewis endured. I want to quote Kevin Murphy, Chief Murphy, "I want you to know that you have friends now in the Montgomery Police Department, that we're for you, we're with you, we want to respect the law and adhere to the law, which is what you were trying to do all along." And so, Police Chief Mercy then pulled off his badge and gave it to John Lewis and said, "This symbol of authority, which used to be a symbol of oppression, needs to be a symbol of reconciliation." Lewis said, "I've been arrested and jailed many times during the 60s, about 40 times, and never has a police officer offered to apologize to me." And that's when I started crying. I guess we had come to this point, that even, when I think about it today, for a young white police officer who wasn't even born when I was suffering the abuse that I suffered in Montgomery, Alabama in 1961, to take the responsibility now to seek that healing, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for that kind of ownership, that kind of courage, and that kind of healing. Thank you.
Thanks for letting me speak today. I am from, I live at 9351 Sherrill Drive. I grew up in Amelia, Ohio, and we used to always play Norwood in football or in sports. I remember one of your famous residents, Mark Edwards, running over our football team pretty well. He looked like a man among boys. And we got a little revenge my senior year, actually, at Chase Stadium, I think 44 to nothing. So I felt a little better, but he wasn't out there. He was actually in the NFL, but... So, and I was a middle schooler, and it happened. So I didn't have to deal with him, and I was thankful for that. I actually joined the Marine Corps, and I'm a Gulf Warrior veteran and served on the Central Intelligence Agency. And I remember Amelia being very similar to Norwood. I remember the racial attitudes that I had, being from Amelia, and the racial attitudes in Norwood being very similar. And they weren't very good. I didn't grow up around diversity. I didn't have very enlightened thoughts myself at all. I'm very thankful I was educated at Northern Kentucky University and mentored by a guy named Michael Washington. And my whole world changed, and I'm a part of Black Lives Matters. And I want to say, and I want to say, I live not that far from this, from Norwood, and I served this country, and I would have died for this country. And I served with guys that did die for this country. We don't serve a country that has different rules for cops and for citizens. We don't bleed for a country that has different rules. We're proud to serve. And so this country actually needs to change and represent the ideas that we talk about around the world. And so coming back here after serving and being educated, you know, it's been amazing when I hear comments like this and, you know, thinking of back where I've grown up, you know, I'd just like to see America stand for what we talk about. And I know where, I know from where I've come from, where I've needed to be educated, and I'd like, I've been a part of a change, and it's been hard for me, but if I can change, I think anybody can. Thank you.
Give us your name and address.
Evening, everyone. My name is Dave Ballinger. I live at 7465 Lakota Springs in West Chester, Ohio. I'm a retired police officer who spent the best part of my career with Norwood. At that time, Tom Williams was my boss. He was my neighbor, and he is my friend. I've met a lot of good people here tonight. Reverend James, Mr. Thomas, I haven't seen you since you were on the police department. It's great to see you.
You know me.
Okay. But I am here because I knew Mr. Williams. I probably know him better than anyone here. I know what he meant when he said, and as Mr. Thomas said, he meant to offend no one. He meant to support his police. Words can be, two people can see the same words and come away with just greatly different opinions. It happens all the time. It's happened here, okay? I've got no problem whatsoever bringing racism out to the forefront, even when it's a friend of mine. Back in 19, I believe it was 97, I think, Mr. Thomas, you'll remember this, I know Reverend James does, I became the first white person in Hamlin County to file a racial discrimination lawsuit against a white business owner because he was charging black customers more than white customers for the same product. I think I remain the only white person who's ever done that. This person was a friend of mine. He paid me $50,000 a year to come to work for him, and I soon discovered what he was doing, gave him one warning to stop, he didn't. Being a retired cop, I collected evidence that would prove my findings. I called, at that time, the most prominent black attorney in Ohio, being Reverend Leslie Isaiah Gaines, who was also a good personal friend of mine, and we took this man to court. It was a successful lawsuit. The customers gained, he lost. He lost his business. I lost my $50,000 a year job, too. So be it, okay? Look, I don't know what happened here, okay? I know the mayor sent a letter of support to the police. He's always supported the police. I expect him to, he's a cop, okay? We've all got to expect that out of him. I don't know if most of you know that that letter wasn't leaked onto Facebook, okay? That letter, the mayor called the police chief, and the mayor told him to place it on Facebook because he wasn't afraid for people to see it. Didn't think it would hurt anyone's feelings. He certainly didn't envision that this would happen, okay? I can assure you of that. The mayor isn't a racist. I can tell you this, if he was, he is not dumb enough to out himself on Facebook, okay? And please don't believe that he is. Over the past week, I guess January 20th, it's kind of funny, I'm 65 years old. I've never been considered a racist, and like I said, I still remain the only white person in Hamlin County. Up till January 21st of my 65 years, I was never considered a racist. But then by some of the things that I've heard, January 21st, I became a racist. Wow, how did that happen? Most of you here tonight don't know the mayor, and you should be here. I respect your being here. You have questions you need to ask, questions that need to be answered. My problem is with the ones that do know the mayor that are here and perhaps are using this for some type of agenda that serves their needs, okay? How many people bothered to call the mayor? I mean, I'm sure he'll talk to you. Talks to me all the time. Probably not a whole lot. He, he's been mayor here now, I think he's in the 10th year of your...
11th.
11th, I apologize, 11th year. The problem I have is that with the people that know him and a couple of these organizations, okay? Amanda or whoever it was that just spoke, I believe you might be with Woven Oaks or Lydia's House, I'm not sure. The letter that you passed around, I have a copy of a letter where the words poisonous racial history and, oh, what was the other word? I can't remember, but anyway, systemic racism that exists in Norwood. Did that just happen, January 21st? And if not, okay, if not, why didn't you bring this up before?
Mr. Ballinger, excuse me, excuse me. Please let, we've been really respectful up to this point. Mr. Ballinger, you have about 30 seconds left when we wrap up.
I didn't hear any of this from those organizations before. I checked their webbooks or webpages, I checked Facebook. I see no mention of it, okay? I'm not saying racism doesn't exist, of course it does, okay? But I don't think, okay, that the racism label fits him or fits the police department. You want to hang a label on him? Bad letter writer. He failed to write a letter that was understood by all and misperceived by none. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballinger. Is Darius Clay here? I just, okay. And Mr. Clay, if you'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes?
My name is Darius Clay. Co-founder of a record label in Cincinnati. Worked with a lot of different organizations. I'm a Baptist deacon, I gotta leave Baptist. My thing is, as he said with the same, with the, with how he said the words was wrong, I think as somebody that writes songs and do writing and stuff like that, that it didn't, he meant to say what he said. So I really can't, I can't say nothing on that. I just think that if Martin Luther King get no fault for it not to be racist here, for us to have it the way that whites, blacks, you know what I'm saying, it's a great, it's a great collaboration of people here that's standing up for this action, for the white, for the Black Lives Matter. So in that case, why can't, you know what I'm saying, black voices count? Because there's a lot of people here that obviously cares a lot about it. So I'm just here, like I said, on the strength of Black Lives Matters, because if our voice don't count, then that's racist. Like I said, just think about Martin Luther King, what they fought for.
I have no other people who wish to speak. You are more than welcome to stay. If you feel the need to leave, we will, may do that as well, and thank you for being respectful. There are a large number of people here, and you are very respectful, and I appreciate that. We'll move to unfinished business. Ms. Allen?
Yes, thank you. I just, I do want to say something before people leave, so if you could just stay for a minute. This past week has been one of the hardest for me in recent memory. It has prompted conversations within myself and with others about what it means to be a leader and how one listens to all sides and then makes a wise decision. It's also caused me to look at times when my words or actions have hurt others from different races. My values lie in making everyone feel welcome and full of worth, but I am the first to admit that this is much easier to do with someone who is like you, and I am definitely guilty of not treating everyone the same, and for that, I am sorry. I didn't think I was going to cry, I'm sorry. I have a responsibility to my constituents to hear their concerns and to move forward in the most judicial way I can while still remaining true to my values. I have heard many opinions this week, the majority of which have expressed their sadness and anger over Mayor Williams's words. Well, I, too, was disheartened. There were times when I just felt like not saying anything, since doing so feels really difficult and full of potential to alienate people that I care for. And besides, maybe I shouldn't be drawing further attention to the issue so that we can just move on, but as a trusted advisor told me this week, the apple cart's been turned over, and if you really want to get somewhere, you can't just ignore the apples in the road. So just as the mayor wanted to clarify his position and his support of the police, I would like to clarify my position in regards to what's happened since that letter was posted and show my support to not only the police but to the black community specifically, as well as other people I call my neighbors who may not always feel welcome because of race, income, et cetera. To echo the letter that was just read by Angela Pensella, I want Norwood to be a place of welcome, a place that respects the dignity of all who visit or come to stay and believe that an inclusive Norwood is stronger, more economically viable city. I also see this situation as an opportunity for us as a city to become a model for the region and perhaps even the country as to how to have police and neighbors work together towards collaboration and not division. I would dare say that probably every community in our nation wrestles with these issues, and we are only human after all. I urge everyone to attend the forum on February 16th to start a dialogue about where we have common ground and how we can move forward in those areas where there may be need for more collaboration and understanding. I will be there to participate in the conversation, and I hope that my fellow council members and the mayor will be there, too. Lastly, when meeting with the mayor yesterday to have a frank conversation about these issues, he said that he's willing to sit down and talk with anyone if you call him. So I urge you, residents and others who care about the future of Norwood, take him up on that offer. I love Norwood as so do many of us here tonight. Let's work together to make Norwood an example in how to get it right when it comes to this emotionally fraught issue of police relations with the black community. I am hopeful for the future.
So let's just take a two- or three-minute break if we can. We'll be back in three minutes. We'll be back in three minutes.
Now, we're talking to Mr. Stith, make sure he's available, which he is. I'd like to call a finance meeting for February the 17th. Six or 6:30? It's a Tuesday.
It's the third Tuesday.
Oh, okay. Third Tuesday to 17th, February. You want to do six or 6:30?
6:30 is easy.
6:30? That's fine. Call him for 6:30 on, uh, February the 17th, a finance meeting.
Here in council chambers?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay. Duly noted. Is there any other new business? Mr. Sanker?
Madam President, I would like to see if this is, if these dates are all right for council. If so, I will request the law department to put together an ordinance to schedule the citywide yard sale for the first and second of May, the first weekend in May, and then the other one for the fourth and fifth of September. If, um, if so, if those dates look okay with council, then we'll have the paperwork prepared for the next meeting. That way, some of the organizations who do put these on will have ample time to prepare. In the past, sometimes we let them know about a month in advance and they couldn't get all their things collected and ready to go. So, I would like to throw those dates out there. If there's no objection within the next week or so, then I'll request they have the paperwork prepared for our next meeting. Thank you.
The fourth and fifth is Labor Day weekend, if that matters? I just pointed out because I have a calendar, that's all.
I believe the Labor Day weekend is that, uh...
Yeah, Labor Day is the seventh. Might be good or bad, I don't know. I'm just pointing out that that's that weekend. So...
So, those are the dates that, if we have any questions or problem with them within the next week and a half, because we still have time to submit for the paperwork. Actually, we can use that as a suggested date, but we really won't need the ordinance prepared on that one until, you know, after the first one. So, but those were some of the suggested dates, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanker. Mr. Thornbury?
Yes, Madam President, I want to mention that we will be having a Community Development Committee meeting. I know the announcement was formalized and sent out, but just to remind everyone and everyone listening, on Tuesday, February 3rd, at, what do we do? 5:30? At 5:30 PM, Tuesday, February 3rd, at Community Development, the representative from the Wasson Way Project will be there to get us caught up on what the latest news is regarding that effort. Right now, that's the only agenda item.
Thank you. Any other new business? I received an email from the OKI Regional Council of Governments. We were supposed to have appointed someone by January the 8th for, to represent Norwood on that committee. It has to be an elected official. I know that most of us work, so in the past, the past two or three or four years, I don't remember, I have been appointed as the elected official, but I don't attend. Chris Brown goes on my behalf and he signs in on behalf of the City of Norwood, but there has to be an elected official appointed. If anyone would like to take on this role, they meet, the problem is, they meet, um, like January 8th, February the 12th, March the 12th, it's at 10:30 in the morning. So, um, if anyone is available or wants to volunteer, let me know. Otherwise, without objection, we'll go ahead and continue that arrangement. Mr. Berkowitz?
I'll volunteer.
Oh, bless you. I appreciate that.
I don't really work here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Berkowitz. I will give you that paperwork to fill out. Is there any other new business? We'll move on to communications. The first is a letter from Fire Chief Goodman regarding ISO ratings.
Donna Lake, President and Members of Council, Norwood City Council, City of Norwood, RE ISO rating. Dear Madam President and Members of Council, I am requesting permission to address council to explain the recent change to our public protection classification. I have attached a copy of the report sent to Mayor Williams detailing the recent analysis of the structural fire suppression delivery system provided by the City of Norwood. Thank you in advance for the opportunity to address council on this issue. Sincerely, Curtis E. Goodman, Fire Chief, Norwood Fire Department.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes, Madam President, I move that the letter be received and filed and that the chief, if he wishes to come up with a...
Seconded by Mr. Mumper, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sanker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Chief Goodman?
Thank you. I'll try to be short, because I may have had a long night. This is a very honorable opportunity for me to let you know that ISO came in. It's a very difficult process. ISO is an independent contractor that analyzes and rates fire suppression services throughout the nation. We have, uh, we, years ago, we used to be a PPC Class II Fire Department. And with General Motors, the decrease of manpower, losing firehouses, we got bumped to a three. It's a grading scale and it's based on your needed fire flow for structures. And what they do is they take your structures and the fifth largest required fire for fire flow in your municipality is what your basic fire flow requirement is. For a city of Norwood, that's 3,500 gallons a minute. Then they take in the water main sizes, hydrant locations, other things as far as the, uh, water supply system. You know, they check all of our documentation as far as our hydrant maintenance. We have somebody out on hydrants almost every day doing some type of maintenance. We flow test a fifth of our hydrants every year, so every hydrant gets flow tested at least once every five year, which is an ISO requirement. And then they review the emergency communications. That's the equipment we have in dispatch, dispatchers, and the alarm system that we have. Then, when they get to the fire department, then they really go through it. They do apparatus, the type of apparatus we have, make sure it's NFPA compliant with equipment, make sure that all of our maintenance records are in place and that we have all the necessary certifications like for ladder testing, pumper testing, and so on. And then the police requires 15. We currently, as of this year, have 13. Total staffing helped, the Safer Grant helped us, it just so happened. The information that they look at is up-to-date time. When they come in, whatever information's available right that day, that's what they base everything on. So with being able to hire six people with the Safer Grant, it kind of came in, kind of handy at this time. Then we also have, they go through all of our training records as far as, you know, the facilities we use, driver training, officer training, hazmat training, even like nighttime training. They also go through pre-fire planning, then operational considerations, that's our SOGs and that's our having an incident management system in place. Community risk reduction, that's our Bureau of Fire Safety. Our education programs, our investigative programs, where we have, we have two people assigned to Bureau of Fire Safety that also do our fire investigation, so that's taken into account. Just to give you a little hint, and the reason I'm really proud over this is, in the state of Ohio, there's almost 2,400 municipalities that ISO has evaluated. Only 32 have a rating of two. It's only 1.3% of the municipalities in the state of Ohio. Nationally, out of over 49,000 municipalities that ISO has rated, they have 750, 1.5% get a two classification. The reason this is important is the insurance industry and actuaries use this to determine insurance rates for homeowners, small businesses, industry. This is the baseline that they use to determine what their rates are going to be. One being, you know, the excellent rate, best rating you can get, which are far and few between in the country, and a 10 which doesn't meet their standards at all. I want to thank several members of the department that helped when ISO was here, but this is a continuing day-to-day effort of our documentation of what we do. Because when they come in, that's what counts is our records. If we don't have it documented, it didn't happen. And that goes from our hydrant maintenance records to our equipment maintenance records, all of our certifications, all of our training records. This is a very time-consuming thing that people don't realize that it takes to put on the service that we offer that happens behind the scenes every day. It's just not running out in big red trucks with lights on them. There's a lot that goes in to make that possible. I also want to thank the administration and council because I've been doing this for almost 16 years as chief now, and I have always had your support. And I do want to tell you that I truly appreciate it, that without the support, just like with the Safer Grant and a lot of the FEMA grants that we have gotten, I have always gotten support of council and the administration, and that's deeply appreciated. I think it's an effort, an ISO rating, even though it reflects the fire department, is given to a municipality, it's not given to the fire department. So, you know, when this letter goes out, it goes out to the mayor of the municipality, so it's the municipality that receives that rating and that classification. So, I think it's something that we should all, all be proud of.
Thank you very much. Very good news.
Thank you. How often do they come, I'm sorry?
Will you take questions?
Sure.
Mr. Sanker?
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
They average, they average about every five years. Give or take. If you have a significant change, we tweaked a lot of things from the last time they were here. And it hasn't been quite five years. But we made some changes and we did some things that we knew we had to do. So we've been working on trying to get our rating back to a two.
And what had it been? A three?
And I was very disappointed the last time because it was on my watch we got a three. I was very disappointed that we didn't make it to a two. I really thought we were going to be there. So, they came back a little early this time. And like I said, we made some changes in the way we do things. We're doing a better job of documenting what we do, because like I said, if we don't have it documented, no matter how many times we tell the ISO that we've done it, it didn't happen. So it has to be, so we've done a lot better job at documentation. What percentage have a two? Out of the state of Ohio? I think it was 1.3% out of the state of Ohio. 32 out of seven, uh, 7, what was it? 32 out of, I forgot. It was 32 out of, uh, over 2,300 municipalities in the state of Ohio, 1.3%. 750 out of, nationally out of over 49,000 at 1.5%. So that's, that's, uh, that's a big accomplishment, I think. I think it's something we can all be proud of. I think, uh, you know, from recent fires we had and everything, I think the job that the guys at the firehouse do is just, I'll put them up against anybody. Simple as that.
Any other questions, Mr. Chief?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Congratulations. Finally, there is a letter from Joe Seeger regarding water sewer rate increases.
Ms. Donna M. Lake, President and Members of Norwood City Council, City of Norwood, Ohio. Dear Madam President and Members of Council, I have received letters from both Greater Cincinnati Water Works and the Metropolitan Sewer District of Greater Cincinnati, and both deal with rate increases for the year 2015. One, the Greater Cincinnati Water Works is increasing the cost of water to the City of Norwood by 4% starting January 1, 2015. It is my recommendation that the city increase the water rate by 5.0% to all our customers starting for the year 2015. This increase is needed to keep up with the new rate being charged by Cincinnati Water Works along with 1.00% to cover fuel costs, material costs, equipment costs, and labor costs. Two, Metropolitan Sewer District raised their rates on January 9, 2015. I have enclosed copies of both the letters from Cincinnati Water Works and Metropolitan Sewer District. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Joseph Seeger, Director of Public Service Safety, City of Norwood.
Mr. Sanker?
I recommend the letter be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper. Is there any discussion? Mr. Whittington?
Yes, sir. The sewer rate, did they give a percentage or something for that? I was looking through here.
It's the second page.
It's the second page, it's the attachment. I think it goes by the size of the sewer.
Size of the meter.
The size of the meter and the size of the sewer. It looks like an average residential 25 cubic feet per quarter went from an average of 199.45 to 211.41, if I'm reading this correctly. So, $12 per quarter. Is that correct?
It's just shy of 6%.
It's on the, it's the third page in the packet.
At the very top, it says the 2015 proposed increase is 5.5%.
It's actually 5.5%. And then at the bottom, it gives you the current average residential quarterly. And so, to put it in raw numbers, you know, 5.5% doesn't mean a whole lot to me unless I look at my sewer bill. So, from 2000, the average from 2014 to 2015 will go up about $11 or $12.
These numbers are the base rate, right?
For minimum.
This is minimum bill?
Yes. Any other questions? Motion on the floors to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sanker?
Yes.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have, we have no absent members. Mr. Mumper?
I move adjourned.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sanker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned. All members present voting aye, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.[1727.02][1727.02](knock on door)